One hundred and forty thousand, not fourteen thousand, which is good. The difference on money in the building is it's still assuming that you that you don't increase taxes and you have that change because it's a converse effect when you decrease property taxes and you add value, it basically zeros out any increase in sales tax.
So you're saying it's fourteen thousand, it's one hundred and forty?
One hundred and forty. Which is good. It does miscalculation on my part. One hundred and forty thousand of when we did that, I'd say that sixteen million, seventeen million is close to about ten percent of the total of cash base last year. So increase, increase close to ten percent. I think two hundred and ninety-five million dollars of value tax. So increased it.
Is that including phase one and phase two as well? Because we did two phases of the annexation.
No, I don't know the answer, but I don't know as far as the total.
They had included both.
Yeah.
The both, okay. Because your next item there says the projected sales tax. The presentation that I saw back in November, the twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, it was a projected, projected sales, sales tax of approximately, at the lower end it was three hundred K. And at the high end was four hundred K for that annexation area, the area that was annexed. It was more going towards the the sales tax rather than the that would lower tax, you know?
And I think that was, that's kind of my question today with the finance department and of course Mr. Jackson, my question is how to calculate that.
Exactly.
Normally you have, there's a service, I think Josie's aware, it's not, there's a service, new services that can give you that amount, help you with the, what the controller gives is an aggregate amount of your tariffs, which you do in this our service tax, but you can do that analysis with whoever was out there, but if you don't have that service, it's kind of hard to determine how much you truly bring in, how that was calculated, how it, uh, I don't know.
Josie, how was it calculated?
We identified those properties are pretty much based on which ones and this case sales tax, like we're aiming for, um, all those kind of ideas. We did try to get with the controller, weren't able to get any feedback, but were able to identify what is kind of evolving. So we just gave you that the three hundred or five hundred. Now, if you look at the sales tax currently, you're able to see a decrease, you're going to hit our targets when we pull back. And that's where, coming to this fiscal year, we were more conservative because now we're able to pretty much identify where we're at. We did start late with the sales tax. We got a letter from the comptroller, come October one, we anticipated the start right then, and then they said, no, we didn't have to ship that a few months to get everything lined up. So in regards to where we're at with sales tax, we don't know if it's whether because comptroller started late or we over projected for the sales tax, but we're currently able to identify and that's what we're projecting.
Well, the thing this fiscal year, maybe the fourth fiscal year, is you're in contact with, I've done this in other cities, is you're in contact with this group that does this work, and they're doing hotel tax. They will give you a list of all of you, all the groups, everybody's businesses that pay sales tax in the city. They will give you who the sales tax people are, you will also identify the dollar number that different businesses pay that are out in the Sanes area. So that's kind of what I would like to see before I give you a true estimate. I'm giving you again a conservative estimate simply because I don't know the answer, but we don't have the service amount, I don't have the information to say that that you're going to see that increase.
So, so at this point, what is the conservative figure that you're putting in?
Two point three million.
Two point three.
I think right now we're at two point five, close to.
We're at one point nine. So we have budgeted for this year two point five because we anticipated collecting by the date and we didn't get pushed back. However, we're still not able to identify what actual business are out there, what they're actually collecting. So currently we're at one point nine, so we budgeted for one point three. So we did go down on our projection.
Two point.
Uh, two point three, I'm sorry.
Okay, and on the sales tax from the comptroller office, I don't think they start collecting until December.
Oh.
October, we need to wait for their, kind of quarterly collection payment. And when they disperse those funds, it's not timeline after the quarterly part, October is way too soon.
Well, we, we get our, our taxes every month. So for your mixed beverage taxes and all that, that's a quarter, or a quarter. For our city sales tax, we do collect on a monthly basis, but it's about two months behind us.
Yeah, it's two months.
So we'll collect for December, we're actually collecting in October, so we're getting them.
It's when they disperse in your office, not two months, ultimately. The question, the question I have is with those properties being, what is this here? Is the annexation people, like we annex, are they getting full city services yet? And if, and if they're not getting full city services, are we collecting a hundred percent since they're not getting full city services?
I'll answer that in the next slide. So, but yes, so to answer your question, some of this, what we want to do, again, the role, the role of me is to make sure that we're supposed to be paying the sales taxes and we, because what happens on our end, if, once we do the annexation plan, we're supposed to follow that information over there. Yeah, I'm sure they know now, you may not, you're supposed to follow the comptroller's office, that way they know to start collecting the sales tax. Now, if that wasn't done, and whatever, however, the community demand is, I don't, I mean, I don't know all the history here, but if that wasn't done, that may, that made some of that as far as collection of sales tax. But again, again, why believe we're taking a conservative estimate, we should be able to get that two point three million dollar projection as far as the sales tax. Again, my, my, my message to council is, again, I really believe there's very some optimism as far as I'm concerned, uh, financial or other things, but again, just be cautious. We do have to be cautious as far as the risk that we're taking with the, with the annexation plan, there has to be, it has to be some calculated risk, it has to be, in my opinion, has to be conservative. But nonetheless, uh, nonetheless. Again, I believe, um, another thing is, our goal again is to maintain, stay in capture rate, I don't, I don't, I didn't put a message in council, but I gather is no increase in taxes, we're not proposing any increases in service rates, trying to keep them at, you know, making sure that we're not over target people on some of that, water, sewage, those concerns. And then on the other side is, is our planning standards, planning and community standards. That's something that we really have to work on. It's, it's not necessarily that we have something urgent happening right now, because it is something that you're planning in order to, to prosper economically, because what's happening a lot of times, businesses want to come in, they don't know, quite frankly, what the standards are. And so we have our plan in place, whether it's a comprehensive plan, we're addressing subdivision regulations, we're addressing zoning, we're addressing, that way people, whoever wants to come in as a business or existing business knows what the rules are. So that's one of the things that I would propose that we, we've been working on, I know we have some money budget for comprehensive and that, but it is going to require some work. And some of the things that you're learning to, right now, there's some projects that running into drainage problems, you're running into problems where, you know, with some zoning issues, we have some, okay? So I know that some of those things that, it's tough on the council side because nobody, to be quite frank, nobody likes regulations. I think it's a tough, it's a tough challenge for us as a staff and also for the council, but it is something that, that from an economic perspective, something that we need to address as some of these.
Sorry, I have a, I have a concern going back to, seven going forward, we go back to the annexation. Are you familiar with any possible lawsuits that's coming before the City of Pearsall on the annexation?
Actually, I know the city attorney right now, and I know that there is, as far as this particular annexation, the one that.
Just the, the annexation as a whole. There's a group of business owners that are getting together and they're filing a bill for lawsuits against the City of Pearsall for, you know, civil rights and, you know, go on and go on and stuff like that. And they're talking about water, sewer, gas, and all the city's utilities and stuff like that. And they're taking some of the, the steps that the City of Pearsall is at fault, that we have no comprehensive plan on, on annex, on giving them any services in time soon and after. And they're going with the issue that there's other areas in the City of Pearsall have been annexed for years, ten, fifteen years, and they have never been, you know, given utility services. And we really have a, like a, you know, pretty, pretty bad situation with these guys who want to file this lawsuit. So, you know, I caution, you know, this budget, that we're really banking on that money out there, I don't know how, how soon it's going to come in, and I don't know if bids will come in. You know, and also the second part to it is the STIC, the STIC money. I know that it's tied up, some of it, you know, it's tied up in court, I don't know when it's going to be released and stuff like that. So, like I said, I caution the council that, you know, whatever decisions we make, not to bank so much on that annexation money, on the sales tax, property tax, and the STIC money.
Right. I think there is a, the city attorney will be discussing some of this with the executive session.
So we, we have gotten letters?
One of the annexations that was, I believe it was ten or fifteen years back, one of the annexation, and to me that I'm aware, so I know the city attorney will be discussing that in the executive session with the council. So we, he and I have discussed things today as far as that goes, but I think he probably wants to discuss it in the executive session. But as far as this other, this most recent one, I think it was March of twenty eighteen, this other two hundred and something, they were annexed. To my knowledge, I don't think there's been any letter, anything filed yet.
It's a, it's a mobile home party.
That one is, it was done about ten or fifteen years ago, if I'm correct.
And there's another one that's coming in.
Okay. But I'm aware of some of that, I'm not aware, I don't know what, but we'll share that. On the, on our challenges, and of course there are many, but, but overall, healthcare has gone up significantly, I think Josie estimated, we, we don't have, I think we should, yes, we're supposed to receive tomorrow, but we're estimating the insurance now fifty, over fifty percent.
Fifty percent.
And so, that, 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 that number is in your budget. Part of that, from what I gather, and again, I haven't talked to our insurance consultant yet, I do want to talk to him, but part of that, and what I gather is the fact that there's several, there's quite a few employees that are sick that have medical issues, which increase the cost of our health. The challenge for us on our end is trying to figure out, and one of the things, the finance director and I, I haven't spoken to you resources yet, but we need to try, in my opinion, take the proactive, some proactive measures, not say that it's going to solve the problem, but one of the things that we could do is, I've done, we've done in other cities that work that is, you require us these guys to actually go through, I say require, you charge them more for premiums, they don't get, you know, their checkups, they're merely checkups, and I'm guilty of how I go to money merely checkup, but I didn't want to pay more premiums either. So that's a measure that we should, in my opinion, take, if not this year, then next year, but we do need to partner, we need to, at the very least, make sure that people are getting some sort of checkup to make sure that they're okay, whether, I know that there's issues, but that means in every community, particularly in Hispanic and African American communities, with multiple diabetes and weather rental conditions. But, but yes, that's a, that's, that's a big, big challenge.
When, I was in the council last year when, I know it was a real big issue in the city with some employees that, about insurance coverage and so on and so forth, but, and I know you went here, but maybe some of the council members were here. When is the benefit packages coming up for bids again? Because my understanding is that it was, like, it was a YMM deal last year?
It was real quick.
It was a real quick, and, you know, just whoever.
By strategy.
And, and I'm going to highly recommend this year that, we're very fortunate, we have Councilman Marial, that's an attorney agent, that he be on a committee or a committee, you know, to best assess the situation.
Okay. We, we do have a broker of agent for the insurance, which he, he should be marketing it out already at this point. The other, the other suggestion that, I don't know if that's even feasible, but you're absolutely right, that the city can pay X a hundred percent, but then it will meet a certain qualification, or a lot like you were talking about, the, the physicals, the, you know, it's like, for instance, Humana has a program that you have to reach a certain level, if you don't reach a certain level, then you're, you have to pay X amount of dollars out of your pay. Otherwise, I mean, if you do meet that level, then, then your employer pays the hundred percent. However, if you don't reach that level because you, you didn't do any, any proactive measures, like getting biometrics, doing, you know, X, X, Y, and Z, then they would have to pay out of their pocket X amount of dollars, you know? And, you know, your BMI had to be within a certain level, your, your blood pressure needs to be at a certain level, your sugar levels have to be at a certain level as well. Otherwise, then the city wouldn't pay the hundred percent. So maybe that would be something that we need to talk to with, with our, with our, with our agent and to maybe, maybe, maybe implement something to that effect, because I, I completely understand between the, 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 that premium to claim racial is just ridiculous, you know, it's just.
It's too high.
It's too high, and that, that's the reason we can't get any competitive bids, because of our, our premium to claim racial, our claims are higher than our, than the premium we're putting in. And as you well know, any business, if you lose money, guess what? They have to pass it on to somebody. They pass it on to the, to the group.
And we have that at my employer, it has been, we have to do a physical every year, and then we do like our BMI, our weight, if we have diabetes, everything is like, we, they have to see that, it's not saying if you have diabetes, we're going to decline you.
No.
But if you are keeping up with it to decrease it, your premiums will drop. If you're overweight and you're doing something to lose the weight, and you're making effort, your premiums drop. But if they see no effort and they wait to not have that heart attack, that stroke, then that's when everything goes up. But it works, it's, they give you days off.
And one of the main reasons we went through this agent that, that we have was this SWBC. The reason we went with them at that point was because they offered all these, all these programs that, that they still have not implemented, which I'm a little disappointed about that at this point. Maybe that's something that we're going to have to discuss with them, that, you know, they promise that they're going to do these, these, these programs, which they have not complied with. SWBC.
That's an employee agent, or that's an? That's the agent.
That's the agent. It's a huge conglomerate.
And tomorrow they'll be here.
It, it's actually a year-to-year basis. It's not a long term, so if we're not happy with it.
The insurance is very high.
Yeah.
Regardless of, you know, how many employees are sick, it's still one of the highest insurance in our local cities, you know, the city insurance is high.
Mind you, I'm, two hundred and fifty thousand, is that giving a decrease, it's not the total amount, it's six, seven hundred thousand, so it's, it's a big increase for the, it's a lot of, a little pain for the insurance. Nonetheless, I want to bring that to your attention. Again, we're trying to address here, again, listening to the city councils, thinking some of the city staff, I'm out there to talk to the public works department, I've talked to the police department, I've talked to as many people as I possibly could in the sort of amount of time I try to understand, streets infrastructure, code enforcement, we just need additional resources. What we're lacking on our end is, is again, making sure we do the things right as far as a comprehensive plan and design standards, but I will share what we're proposing as far as the deep companies. What we're proposing as far as the budget is a three percent cost of living increase. Now, the other thing that we're going to try to propose is a thousand dollar one-time paid for non-salary employees, we built that into the budget, and there's two reasons we did, again, I'm proposing that for non-salary employees, people that are not, and I'm talking about men, I'm talking about the folks that didn't pay higher salaries, I'm talking strict to the people that, in my opinion, didn't even know, you know, that's, that's who I'm recommending. And with that, what I'm saying is that the minimum of three percent increase, that's going to stay, if the salary is going to constantly increase, three percent is going to be with the salary, so three percent is a one-time paid, assuming budget goes well, including, you know, projections, we pay and we release that check in June, July, next this year. So if the budget's not going well, I want to go and say it's an automatic guarantee, but then we either release or don't release those dollars, but we build it into the budget. So the thousand dollars, again, is for all non-salary personnel, and hopefully that's a little bit of incentive, it's not a lot of money, but there's something to give them a little bit of fun. I believe that we can, we can fund it, and I'm not, I'm not going crazy by, by having all kinds of thing increases, at least a minimum increase to the salary. I think all in all, Josie will go over, totally, you know, to protect this across just in the general fund side.
So we have any?
Because we have paid better than we currently rate that are working on our street needs during hours, as low as nine to ten dollars an hour.
So we have about forty thousand and three thousand, so we fund, maybe about four employees in the general fund.
Then to the two, the thousand dollars.
For the, for the thousand, for the thousand dollars. And then the same thing with the thirty percent was about talked about, for a general fund and in total.
So there is, there is some additions to, again, to both the general fund, to refund. And, and I'll try to, I'll explain to you how we're coming to some of these things. Two additional positions, that's long to, that, we, Josie filling in on this, three additional positions will be hired for streets, and the third position, you may even locate another, shift to somebody from the viable, so you're going to have a total of six people working streets, I think we leave right now at three, so we're proposing adding two public forces.
So we have three right now in streets, or two?
That's my, I think we have the sort of gentleman that does.
We have only two.
There's two with the, it's the pothole caster and the maintenance, but we also have Joe for that, but two that actually work on streets.
But Joe, Joe's been on the.
He's not medical.
Medical. That's a, maybe equipment operator, that's the only one we have.
And if he is here, he's only doing operating equipment.
Uh, we have two.
Who's that?
Mr. Obama.
He's the one that does the calculations and.
Uh, Joe, they're kind of Joe.
Joe. So by adding three additional positions, that will make it five.
Five.
And six with Joe.
Six, and six if we, if we shift somebody from.
Right away.
To the.
To the streets.
I, I, I've talked to them, I've talked to the street people, and they feel comfortable with six, that that's not the ideal thing for them, but they think they can do.
Yeah, because I don't think like now with two, you don't, I understand, like, when they made the cuts last year, it's to save money, but you're saving money, but your work is not going to get better.
No.
It's just going to go backwards, so.
I think you actually skipped one line, the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, where is that being derived from? For the streets?
We have the, the street budget, the labor budget in three, and I'm, I'm really, the , the, the street budget.
Is that with the current budget violation?
So you're looking at the industry department?
And have the silco.
Is that the general?
One oh five, four oh eight.
So you're looking for, there's under, under the street department, very bottom there in the sheet, page eleven, you'll see the maintenance.
It's three hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight seventeen?
We, yeah, and we, we add the fifty thousand dollars at the very bottom. I don't know why we separated the silco, it's my opinion.
There should be a gap in that.
Three hundred and seventy-five, to me, it's, it's street, it's, it's my, it shouldn't be separate, I don't know why we separated it.
Do you use the silco in front of anything else other than the streets?
Silco is just for streets. It's just a method, it's just a method, a method to do with street workers, you can do silco, you can do, you know, whatever type of treatment you want to street to see, but silco is just a treatment.
So the fifty thousand will be coming from the silco?
Yes.
Okay. And then that will get us to three seventy-five approximately?
Yeah, because I, I couldn't, I, I just couldn't, it wasn't jiving.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, now it does.
Maybe we can put that back together so that's not a, a tall in.
On one.
Yeah, and on the treatment, Rose, we should, we'll, we'll go to public force and we may think that's what they feel is the best treatment.
I just don't think with two people, you're going to have a successful department.
We need, we need to add, I think it's a big thing, we need to add people to that, and, and make sure that they have, I know that one of the things they compromise is the equipment, and the lack of the, 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 the knowledge to operate, and I think, again, some of the folks have been there for a little while, but they need to have a training to operate some of this, some of this equipment. I know that the street people are sitting out there, I talked to them about their patcher, and so, so I think they can utilize a patcher some, but I gather they have problems with it.
They need to handle that and all that.
So they have, they have constant mechanical problem with the patcher, but it is something that we really need to invest in something, you know, to make sure that, and some of this is a lot of money, I'm not going to do the, the.
You're talking about the patcher, okay, what warranties do we have on those, could we just buy those things?
I need to look back.
Can we look at that, because that's, that's money down the drain, if you don't look at it.
And usually the guys are a little bit.
But I, I need you all to look at it, because we need to get our money's worth.
Because even if the guys miss a maintenance date, we got to have a calendar in here making sure they come, even if, if maintenance doesn't mean that we fix it when it breaks, maintenance is that we just keep it up to it, up to date, making sure the oil's on it, just like your car.
Yeah, my, my concern is that, you know, we hardly ever see those two trucks, and, and they're broken, is what we're told. We're still waiting for a maintenance schedule over a two-year period. And, you know, what do we invest in, you know? One truck is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, the other one's about two hundred and seventy-five thousand. You know, if we don't have warranties on those things, we don't.
They should.
We should.
We should warranty work, it should be ninety, ninety-six. And what I mean by that, that mostly, what, what we can look at, I haven't looked at the contract to be reading, but we should.
I said warranties.
Not only, yes, not only incorporate the warranties, but also the maintenance schedules as, as part of the contract, and by, required, whoever sold this equipment to the company and maintained it, then, I think the city staff feels that they can make, and I'm not saying that they can't, they can maintain the equipment on their own, but it does require some sort of a maintenance schedule in order for us to keep the warranty, and some of the things that we have to keep, because if these guys don't do it, and I'll, I'll be quite frank, you buy a piece of equipment from them, and they'll say, well, you didn't comply with the, with the maintenance schedule, consequently it's not covered, you know, had that happen in other cities I worked at. But, but I will say that that is required, should be required with the movement, and I know it costs money, even, even when you do a maintenance agent, maintenance, you know, we, but it's worth the, it's, for my, I mean, it's worth, you know, keeping up with the equipment and making sure that it's, because we're using it for what we're supposed to use, and what I gather right now, they're using the patcher, but it's not, it's not being used for, for, it's, it's, they're escaping it, I'll rephrase that, it's, it's being used for certain things, I think they just, they just do certain things, I think it's the way, the way you work over as far as oil, pretty much.
Those workers should be out all the time in the patcher, because how the streets look, they should be used all the time.
So, so that, that is all in the, in the budget, we did, not, there's nothing in the budget, just to, council, whether there's nothing in the budget for equipment, the equipment, we, if we do lease it, some equipment, we won't pay that until, I gather, I haven't used equipment in a long time, but we do lease equipment, we're going to be able to do it to the next, as far as payment, it is something that, that just the council.
Okay, I have, let's see, I wanted this earlier because I have last year's budget, I don't know if I have last year, but here it is, here. For the maintenance, I didn't see any, it wasn't like five thousand maintenance, did you see that, whenever we had that? There wasn't a lot of maintenance budgeted and repairs.
Last year's budget for the streets to repair the maintenance.
Was seventy-one thousand?
We did year-to-date, the actual seventy-one thousand, before that was seventy-three thousand.
How much was that spending?
That's the year-to-date we expended, I can see that.
Okay, seventy-one thousand was the actual budget, year-to-date, is that a hundred and ten?
So, yes, the year-to-ten, the year-to-date is a hundred and ten.
Do you know of that, I didn't look at this, so, do you know of that, how much you spend on maintenance? Not, not.
If it's maintenance and repairs, that's what I wanted to break it down, because that's what we need to know, are we fixing things or are we maintenance-ing things? Because your only budget, seventy-one thousand, it went over, year-to-date, you're at a hundred and ten. Because your only budget, seventy-one thousand, it went over, year-to-date, you got a hundred thousand, a hundred and ten. So we need to know where the problem lies and is our new equipment breaking? Are we not using it properly, are we not maintaining it, or are we just buying?
Your auto repairs and maintenance is right above that, that four sixteen, that's auto repairs and maintenance. The one that you're looking at, repairs and maintenance is repairs and maintenance of streets, so that's all your popple patching and everything. Your streets and your roadways is your infrastructure on the actual large portions.
Okay, so I, the heavy equipment repair, this is where I'm at, and I'm sorry if I had it earlier, I could, I could write my notes. And the heavy equipment repair, this is the one that was a big question from a lot of community members, I didn't open my post last year for this.
Okay.
Because I had city employees saying, Vina, I cannot order water bottles, I cannot order meters, there's nothing budgeted. And I said, okay, let me go look at the budget and let me see what, on my part. We have on the, on the heavy equipment repair, we have zero dollars budgeted for last year. Okay, zero dollars, okay, year-to-date, we're at seventeen thousand. Okay, that, that's not, that's not right, okay, because we budgeted zero dollars. Anytime for maintenance and repairs, you have to have a dollar on there.
On your budget, you have your current at seventeen thousand five hundred.
Yes, but we were budgeted year-to-date, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen was at zero dollars.
It's seventeen thousand five hundred.
The actual, this is what I'm looking.
Your actual is seventeen thousand four fifty-six.
Actual is zero dollars.
Oh, you're looking at previous year.
Yes, I'm looking at the previous year, I'm looking at this year, and so I, I don't wanna go back to what we did last year. Because then we're gonna come back to this problem with the guys not having, I'm gonna tell you one thing, when I had to order a meter for one of my houses. The lady paid the deposit, and this is how it was brought to my attention, she came over here, the guys turned, they went and turned the water on for her. That day she called me, her whole front yard was flooded. So we called the city, it was four forty-five, city came in, the meter was broken, it was broken. Then the guy came in and said, we have no meters because we don't have it budgeted. So what do you mean you don't have it budgeted? And then that's why I looked at that.
If you look at your page eleven, what she's talking about right here, so it's seventeen eighteen, there's nothing budgeted. But we had everything launched, the repairs and maintenance, seventy-one thousand, and our guys were telling us, well, we're doing repairs and maintenance for vehicles, our equipment, and our, so that's why we, we addressed that in eighteen nineteen. So we opened it up and we put heavy equipment repair, seventeen thousand, two thousand on auto repairs and maintenance, and then ninety thousand in repairs and maintenance for the roads. So we were able to identify the different needs of repairs and maintenance, so now they're able to identify, okay, we can do seventeen thousand, go to repairs and maintenance of equipment, and then we can do about two thousand, that's our registration vehicle.
What I'm trying to get at is that maintenance in this budget, if we wanna breathe, it is very, very important. Because everything stops, and when you go over budget, like, everything has gone over budget, there should be amendments.
Yes.
And I haven't seen an amendment, they're just spending, okay, well, we budgeted ten thousand, we need it, we need it, no, no, sir, bring it to the city council, explain to, because we're here to protect the tax dollars. That's what we're doing, they're gonna hold us responsible for this. If we have zero dollars budgeted for maintenance and we're going over to seventy, seven, seventeen thousand, this budget has to be amended. Anytime it's one penny over, we have to approve it, and we have to have clarification for it.
We did pass a policy for interdepartmental budget amendments, so within the departments, if they go over their budget, we're able to identify other line items to go.
But we can't do that.
And move over, it was passed.
Yeah, but just that passing, the, the law is council has to approve the amendments, we cannot give a supervisor authority to go over the budget. They got to follow this, this is the bible of the city. This is the money that we only are allowed for them to spend, if the council approved a policy to let a supervisor go over.
It has to be approved by city manager for it to be moved over now.
Yes, but I don't think the city manager.
Then it comes back.
I don't even think the city manager, have you done that without doing an amendment to?
No.
No, no, like I said, I, I don't know the policy, I have to read the policy, you know, on the street, uh, but, but I, I'll, give me a chance to look at the policy.
Yeah, I'm just worried about this overspending without approval.
I understand.
I'm very worried about that.
And, and just to clarify, there is a budget for seventeen thousand and they use your dates and.
Um, I know we talked about vehicles maintenance, um, some of the vehicles that we have are getting older already. Uh, any departments, are they getting new vehicles?
We're gonna, we're, again, I don't have enough, I didn't have enough time to, to look at pricing for vehicles, I didn't have the time to, to, to assess leases, to see, but I would like to see if we can entertain buying some vehicles. I've seen, I know we have some vehicles that are, um, that are hand-me-downs, I'd say at least from, I think they're confiscated, and I'm not saying that we have to drive the top-of-the-line pieces of equipment, I'm not saying that. What I am saying is that we do have to give these guys at least something to work with, uh, and so, so with that, what I'm proposing is give me a chance to, to come back and get some, I asked, I think, I, I wanna see an inventory of the fleet, what we have, and then make some, some assessments as to what we can reasonably, you know, buy. Um, I know that there's some equipment out there that, and I've seen it, and I've asked, I'm more, I have these who are confused, but I ask questions more than any of these, like, well, is that, I don't know if it's a city truck or not, I think I saw a brown dog or something.
Yeah, and I know what they, they were, they were trying to save money by these, these confiscations from drug seizes, but they're, they're not only ugly, but there's no A/C in them. I saw two of them with no seat belts, I saw the other one with the seatbelt clip broken, I saw the other one with the A/C thing out. Is this what we're representing in the city of Pierceville? I mean, you're driving drug seized vehicles, that's not for the city to do, we get vehicles and we sell them. You know, we don't have our employees driving, we're also putting a liability, I think.
Right.
Not like I'm often hit, you're driving my truck, you know, you just never know. I don't think it's, it doesn't look right, I see these trucks, they don't represent Pierceville well, we're not putting our city employees in a safe vehicle. We were here, we got grants for the cop cars, I think we got four or five one year, we also got a grant for two city vehicles. You know, this is where these, my natural advisors that we should have, these are for these grant riders that we should have, that we can get these cars, but we cannot have our city employees driving these vehicles. You know, the Chief Martinez's truck, we bought that truck, there, there's nothing top of the line of that truck, that truck has a lot of miles, it's, it's old already. And everybody's just driving it, and I see these vehicles in town, it's some old car too, and guys driving it, and it's like, nobody sees, there's a fan in there.
I think once, yeah, you observe the fleet and what we have, and you can come back to work on the basis.
We'll come to you, the, the one thing that I will say on our end of what we do is with the fleet, or whatever, whatever equipment we buy, we do have to have some accountability to, and what I'm proposing on that is, I mean, and some of the staff may not like it, which I'm sure they will, but I, I, I think it's a good idea to put some GPS units on these trucks, uh, this, this equipment. It's simply because it, I, I want the GPS units and they're, they're safe cars for not only the city, but it is, it's, it's a way of tracking, making sure that people are doing whatever it is they're doing.
If you put GPS on there, it's a win-win situation, an employee gets in a car accident, that example happens, how fast they're driving.
Yes.
Has cameras in it, and it's not because we don't trust them.
But I thought that there was already vehicles with the GPS.
Girl, we got vehicles with no A/C, no seat belts.
No, but I, I could've sworn that.
I don't, I don't.
City, uh, employees that used to work with the city had made a comment about the city manager, which was Tink, when he first got here, that he installed those, uh, GPSs on the vehicles.
I know, if, 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 the GPS is minimal cost and, and.
Very minimal.
Really, it, it should be up to the, and I, I'm not gonna play, I'll be honest with you, I'm not gonna play big brother, but I think it's up to the department directors to track what their staff is doing, uh, their positions and.
Did you ever keep inventory of anything that, that was bought as far as for, like, supplies or anything for employees or for, you know, anything as far as just materials or?
Are you talking about like the GPS or?
No, no, just in, in general, the supplied materials.
Usually what we have, the department, at the department level, like the police department for cameras and everything, they have their inventory, um, and then if it's an expenditure, like a durable, um, expenditure, then it's.
Sir, um, I guess this question goes back to, not so much to fleet, but also the, uh, heavy equipment, uh, machinery of the employees. Were we gonna have department head meetings, uh, to speak to these department heads and ask them about the wish list?
I, you know, we, it's late in the budget and I wish I, I'm, to be honest with you, we normally do, and I would welcome that if I had more time, I, but I know that on our end, for the sake of.
Okay, so when?
We could, we could invite them, I just, I just know that what we're proposing to you, you know, you've given us some consideration, uh, and I, I think I've, I've reviewed some of the wish lists, I can't say that I renewed everything, but, but I can tell you that. To me, it's, we could, we could, we could talk.
And in the, uh, in the budget, uh, did you implement, uh, equipment for, like, for example, the, uh, water department, you know, for Rudy, you know, I know.
Nope, nope. No, sir, if, if what I'm saying on the equipment side, and I'm talking, I'm talking high-dollar equipment, uh, we, what I'm suggesting is that if we were gonna get into a lease to purchase some of this equipment, we're not that, that's not gonna be due till the next year. So what I need to do is go back and get a list of equipment that we're proposing to buy, and then, and then bring that to the council and let you know this is what we're, we're planning on purchasing, but not, it won't be a penalty this year, it'll be due next year. So we do need to get that list, I don't, I can't say that I have that list, uh, but I would like to systematically come to the council and purchase equipment. On the other hand, I don't wanna go and purchase a bunch of equipment and then just sit there and we not, we not use it for anything, so, so that's what I'm, I'm prepared with. I wanna come to the council and say that we have positions, if you agree, for instance, to five or six positions for the, for the streets, my opinion is we do need to purchase some equipment for them to do the work.
Speaking, speaking, for the record, Mayor, Mayor Morris here, it's six fifty-five.
Um, so, so yes, we will come with a list, I know that there was a wish list of, like, police units, uh, but I had, I think there was some of the list of equipment from the maintainer, there was some other things that I know that were on that list. Uh, but again, uh, on the other end, if the council says, no, we're not gonna include the streets, I'm not saying that you're saying that, I'm saying if you don't include it, then there will be no purpose to buy anything. So, so that's kinda what we look at, is if we're gonna include the positions and let's go ahead and buy some equipment, uh, to do some work. So, uh, on the, on the other couple things that we have on here, uh, we have the two code enforcement, what I talked to the chief about this, I know that's an issue, uh, particularly here, they do code enforcement slash animal control. The idea there is to have two people that do code enforcement slash animal control, nothing more than that. When I spoke to the chief of maintenance, we're not proposing that they become officers or become commissioned or anything like that, their goal is just to be animal control slash, that's all they'll be doing. So we do have one position that we were proposing, uh, it's current code enforcement, shifting that over to, to the police, police department to do code enforcement slash animal control, we've hired an additional position, so you have two positions for that, uh, for that one.
So you're beginning to move it over to compliance?
And yeah, they, they will be doing both, it's not, what I'm, what I'm making clear to the chief and, and the council is whoever we hire for those positions is gonna be doing both the work of code enforcement and animal control, it's not gonna be a license to code enforcement or not animal control. Whoever is hired for those positions, that is gonna be their one.
And are they gonna be versed in, in code compliance?
Yes, yes, I know one of them has some training in code compliance, the one that's currently in this position, uh, but we do need to get them certified in case as animal control officers, and, and I spoke to the chief, I don't think there's, what I gather, it's not very rigorous as far as training for animal control, the matter of which you can see that. And, uh, and I think maybe a little, maybe a little more rigorous is code enforcement, but I don't think there's, there's much, as far as to give them certified, I think, uh, I think it's, it's very much training is what I dare, it's nothing more than a week or so, trained in that. So, so we wanna mention that to you, and those will be reported directly to the chief, uh, chief of police.
But, but this position is not gonna take away from his police officer, right?
Yes, that's the goal, to do, it's quite the. Yeah, it's strictly the code enforcement.
Everybody has to report to the.
Yes. And, uh, so, so I think the chief, the chief is aware of that, and so we talked about that earlier this week, to kinda mention that, what we're, we're proposing on the budget side. There is, again, a good and a bad side, and, and what I'm, what I'm going with this is, there's, there's a pro and a con as far as positions, things that we have to do in order to try to meet budgets, it's limited resources, we don't have, I wish I could have had money to pay for every single thing that we're proposing, or not proposing, but, but truthfully, there's some cuts that have to be made, but we're proposing. There, if, when we're looking at right now, there's not gonna be any increase to, to healthcare premiums, we don't have that plugged into the budget, uh, for staff, so whatever they're paying this year, again, due to the lack of time, I think there wasn't any plug, uh, to, to increase the premiums. We can look at that.
I don't believe they, they contribute anything.
They don't pay anything.
On top of the bank, the bank, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
The bank contribution, yes, that's, I'm sorry, I made a mistake, but there's things like that that we, we should look at, again, if not this year, for the next history, we need to make sure we can talk to insurance and stuff, because, because insurance premium, they, it's, I mean, they take off.
Sixty thousand.
Uh, so, so it's a big cost there. Another, and again, two more changes, again, this is where, where there needs to be some discussion, in my opinion, and this is just based on the, the little time that I've had, some of the discussions I've had with staff and the city council. Community development, economic development positions, and I'm talking on that end, uh, there's two positions there we're looking at, um, the main street manager, city clerk, and city manager, uh, in my opinion, we could take on the task of community economic development. I, uh, you know, I struggle with this, uh, simply because it's, it's, it's something that I'm making decisions based on the little time that I've been here, but at, at the same time, because of the, the positions we're adding and the things we're adding to the budget, there has to be some sort of a gift take, I can't, we can't pay forever. So what I'm, what I'm recommending to the council is that we make some plans to be able to, to offset some of these additional expenses that you know, what I, what I've, what I've heard from the council is make sure you focus on streets, make sure you focus on, you know, animal control slash code enforcement, and that's, if you look at the budget, that's what we're focusing. And I'm not suggesting that economic development means development on the fourth, but I am saying that, that's, that's primarily the financial. Uh, we'd like to, I'd like to move forward and hire a consultant to begin a comprehensive plan, again, we have some money budgeted this year, and also start working, and I had a discussion over a certain term about some of this, and I asked them from the last time, we updated our vision, our subdivision and its own regulations, it's been, been a long time. Had a new code ordinance since, like, a year or two ago, but these actual regulations haven't been updated, or standards haven't been updated in, you know, very long time, from what I get.
And there's two brightness subdivisions going up right now, big subdivisions.
And maybe, and, and the community needs to know what our standards are, or, or developers, uh, whether they're developing in town, out of, out of the, I have thirty-five quarter, developers will ask me this question, and, and they'll ask me what, you know, the city that worked at before that had the same issue, they'll ask me, what are your, what are your grain departments, what are your street departments, what you, how you want your roads to be built, things like that, that we don't, uh, really have a, an answer to because we don't have the standards. And, and the good and the bad to that is that, that it's pretty cheap to develop, because there's not any standards, you know, and I'll be quite frank, the bad part is, is that developers are, what do I do, they're not sure that, that what they're doing is, is up to, to whoever builds, and I know you have a, a new marine fund that looks at, you know, different subdivisions, but it, it shouldn't, I'll be quite frank, they can review it, but it should be in our codes, in our ordinances, as to what our, what our standard is, uh, as far as development.
Would that be included, aesthetics and materials and?
It, it depends on how far you wanna go, and not what I mean by that is, um, you, yeah, some folks, some folks, they get to the aesthetics, and some folks just want you to say, if you're gonna build a building, you need to have as many parking spaces. If you're gonna have, I mean, that's, that's just basic stuff, if you're gonna.
Or the house can have this to one feeling, for each other.
If you're gonna build, these are your setback requirements, this is what you need, you have to have as far as. If you're going to build, these are your setback requirements. This is what you need to have, you need to have as far as your street, where your streets are going to run to, and how a street should be built. A lot of these streets, the newer streets, most of them require, currently they're going to, to, to new subdivisions, should require that because it should help with your drainage. I know that you've got drainage funds, you're leasing the other questions about why didn't anybody, drainage issues, but all that should be addressed in your, in your subdivision or subdivision. So again, that's something that, it's going to take time, and I would like, it really needs to happen, primarily from the council, but also from the business community. Those, they have a stake in this, in fact, they need to, they need to be a part of this, this sector, whatever that is. And some folks may not want to, but it is something that at the very least, we should also say that we want to participate in this for the business board. So again, again, the good and the bad, and the, that's, that's all we have as far as cuts, the additions. Those are the things we're proposing in your, in your, well, I, I don't have. You know, working on the resources we have, that's the best that I could do as far as additions, cuts, and all of these are proposing for, for improvements to save people more. So again, that's, that's the, so this, the other parts of, of, you know, comfortable part of doing this type of work. It is something that I try to budget, but this is best I could, what the needs is.
So the proposals you gave us today, does, does those cuts are already taken into account?
Those are, those are plugged in there. You'll see increases for, for instance, you'll see increases like the streets. You'll see increases for the police department simply because you're taking on. But those, those are plugged in there, public works are record positions in there. I think actually that's in the charter, I think the public works are.
It has to be, it has to.
Have a public works record per the charter. Yeah, you could combine, what I read in the charter, you can combine divisions or departments, but you should have all those positions fit, classified. That's what the charter calls it. So you have, those are, that's part of the budget. We try to, we try to balance as best we could, but the concern is always the general fund. The general fund is, you can see though, that there's not very many cuts, or any cuts, I think, to the utilities. It's all general fund, that's the toughest, funding balance.
So the only thing that's lacking here in this, it would be the sales tax, the presumed sales tax that we're going to presume receiving from the annexation, correct? That's the only thing that's lacking?
And I believe, again, I believe the projection issue of sales tax is conservative, it's a conservative sales tax. We'll hit that, whether you, whether we, if it's an increase or we're getting more money for the annexation, we'll hit that projection.
So what I'm looking here, I'm looking at a negative, is that correct?
You have a negative, you have a negative on, there is no transfer in on that, on either one. So, I believe your fund balance on the utility side is a bit of a fund balance that I think is just very, I don't know. But it's, it's, I'd say roughly around seven, I think the cap for last year, I mentioned, you know, fund balance for utilities, which is a strong fund. Where we, we don't have, at least, again, what I've seen so far is the general fund is where we, the fund balance is in a strong position. So, so the idea, the need is to transfer money from the fund balance to utility fund to pay for the negative balance you see. That is, that is.
That also includes the spike in health insurance, so tomorrow, depending on what we receive back and the direction that Yon tape, whether or not the employees are going to have to provide a portion or whatever the case may be with the health insurance, that will also be considered, and raising the wage.
So, so it's, is that still on, on the table, that they might have to contribute?
Depending on what we receive tomorrow.
We have, we have a plug running out that might contribute a week, but we couldn't, I don't know, Josie, that was worst case scenario?
That was worst case scenario.
Plug in the worst case scenario as far as.
See, because we are, we also provide them the supplemental benefits as well. I mean, that's, that's, that's huge. You know, because, I mean, you can actually count that as salary as well, because most employers don't pay a hundred percent in, in the supplementals and all that good stuff, you know?
We provide, the major medical will provide, provide gap and the life insurance.
We'll look at that, and then maybe if we can make some changes to, we need to make changes to offset some of this, but it is, I think we have a negative fund.
A deficit of three hundred and sixty-seven, in which that's pretty much how much our health insurance.
So our general fund would not have a negative?
Well, the, the actual revenues to expenditures, right?
That's what we.
Negative, five dollars now. Again, what you've done historically is you've moved money, from what I gather, you, you moved money from your, from your water utilities to. We're trying not to do there, and this is another, did I have another item on? There is, I thought I had an item on there. There was, there is an item on there, if I remember correctly, the annexation. And bring that up simply because I think we have an estimated, an estimated cost for annexation of about two hundred something meters, of two point eight million dollars.
When I saw your, the projection on March twenty-seventh, it was one, one point eight, because there, there's already some utilities to that, to that, that area. So I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think all we needed in that, some of that area was, was the sewage. I think that's how it was, because we, we have, we have gas and water all the way to.
We have gas, half.
Halfway?
Yeah, I'm sorry, water and gas all the way up to.
All the way.
I don't know if it's the latest projection, that was sent to something, L and B gave us some of the cost, maybe it was revised. L and B gave us one, gave them back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and I think it was, that projection had a two point eight million dollars. Now, that may have changed, but if it's two point eight million dollars, then the question is, we're going to have to find a way.
So, so, correct me if I'm wrong, what is the timeframe that we have to provide the services to? Two years?
Two years.
I talked to Bobby today, and I asked him, if it was a time, from the time that the ordinance was signed, I think it was March twenty-eighteen. I believe we have four and a half years, so we still have, we still have some wiggle room, but there, there is, L and B needs to, this is the latest projection. It's just from December fourteen to twenty seventeen. L and B, as far as the work that needs to be done out there, and made through the few structures, it's two point five million, two point five million, I'm sorry. And so it's, it's, so it's two point five million dollars, so I think you have some wiggle room to go into design. We're going to go into design probably as it be, is it this year? Probably this year. And then that way they can start construction, or maybe.
I, there, there was, well, we had the public notice, the public hearing, I'm sorry, there were some that just didn't want to. They didn't want services, they didn't want the sewer, they didn't, because they already have, they have septic, sewer systems and what have you. So, and I believe under the advisement of council, he, they, he stated that, you know, it's their prerogative. However, however, at any one point that they decide to sell that property, the city's not, it's not responsible for providing that service. Because the prior owner had denied services, so there's no way we can go back. And I'm wondering if that's the case with some of these issues that, that, that people are saying, hey, well, the city ten years ago annexed this, and, you know, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the issue is.
I think it was an issue from two years ago, they still don't have water, and they still don't have, I mean, they don't have sewers. So, that's what the other people were complaining about, like the A and B area. They didn't want services, and they thought that would be worth, because they're paying city taxes now, before they didn't.
Who's this again?
The people that were annexed, that came in and said they didn't want.
That A and B wall?
Yeah, that, that area out there.
That wasn't annexed.
But not that way, this way. Like this down area, this way. Okay.
How good of an idea to talk, the executive session, Bobby has some good information.
And one of the things, one of the things that, because we questioned a lot of those things. One of the things that came up was that the city had looked into some of these areas that had been developed. The developer was responsible for utilities that never got done. So, we don't know, I mean, that's something that we can look into, because that's what council had, we had talked about. Before we go out and annexing, let's take care of what we haven't taken care of. And so what brought back to us is that it was really on developers instead of the city, and so, I mean, that's what we're talking about.
Right. I think the city attorney, we haven't discussed that part, that part of development. But yes, normally it is up to the developers, they come and file a flat and say, this is what we're proposing as far as development. But yes, that's just not, whether we can go back and make sure that this stuff is done, whether it's drainage or whatever. I had to ask this attorney, but I don't know, if, if, it's possible, but I don't know. But it is, again, going back to, to the development of the annexation. We are going to have to find a way to finance that, the two point five million dollars. And so that's probably, you do have a strong utility fund, you're going to have to make some investments and hit that utility fund to pay, to pay for that. I will say this, there is, there is a need, here is to hire financial, we make sure we have financial advisors. And if you want somebody to help us, helps us with our rates, to make sure our street infrastructure, where there should be water and sewer, all ends, we need to hire a consultant. Folks that do that, and I've ever said that, minus one, hire a consultant to help, and make sure, a consultant for water and sewer. That's what the council, I'll be quite frank, that's what you hear most of the time, when they start, we started raising water rates, we started, what, anything, taxes making, maybe property tax, maybe not. A lot of those, when we started raising the water rates and, you know, yeah, significant increases, we started.
And I believe we tabled that, that issue, I, I think we could possibly put it back on, on table.
The next.
Those are the only things we probably should add for some.
Yeah, those guys don't get paid to, to work on.
I don't think there's a need a rush to issue any of that anytime soon, in the next six months or so. But there needs to be some, at least they need to, they need to draw on, bring draw on board, don't ever, don't get ready to issue, or for this, or any other type of issues, they, they plan out the side of that. And then the right consultant, if there needs to be, if we need to review our rates, they, they need to have the side of that. Whoever, whoever is hired does, it's just a matter of, it's a matter of.
But I think we should still take a consensus of the people that really want the city utilities out of that area, why don't we just say next? Because they don't want it, why are we spending one point, whatever, million dollars to do it, if they don't want it, desire? So, I don't know how many.
I don't think we'd have, like, we just put the line, like, say the sewer line, they don't need a, they don't need a.
Tap in.
Tap in, but we still need that line there. So if we don't put that line, it's going to cost us more money in the long run, and it's going to cost us money to have time to wiggle our way out of it. If, if they don't want to tap in, they don't need to tap in.
As long as, I think the statute means, I mean, as long as the city provides reasonable, reasonable, as far as tapping, so you, you're limited so many feet. They tap in, but choose that's their choice, that's their water. They don't have good, what they'll find out, most people.
Okay, come back.
Property owners, is that.
You got to tap in.
If you have city services, and they don't pop that, if you have city services, it's going to increase the value of your property if you, if you're seeing the services that you didn't. And those are probably the most valuable things the city provides as far as.
And as far as the, where it's placed, that's the city's prerogative, correct? You know, because I, I think there was one, one room resident was upset because if we were, yeah, it was going to be on the opposite side of the road. And of course, anything in their property, they have to run their own drain, you know?
I think the city has to go on a knee and take it to them, prop the edge, prop the edge of that.
I don't know if the board is included in this, if we're going to board, and I don't know, again, this as far as how much we can get the owners. I want to say some quote, but they're, they will be within reasonable distance to tap in.
It's like, it comes down to property, I mean, like, if they either want to agree with the city, or we just go on and do it. We're not going to ruin the property, we're not going to go by either door, just within enough feet, if they're ready to tap in, they're going to tap in, because it's going to cost them more.
One other note, I did, I did speak to the, to L and B getting in today on this project, the annex building. They're, they're getting ready to move some dirt, what I gather, next week. They're getting ready to move dirt on that, and I think they're giving a contract, getting a session with the contract that they need. It's two hundred and forty days of construction, so it should happen, the new annex will be constructed sometime next week. Construction should start next week, so I just wanted the council to leave a word, where you are, and moving forward with that project, and all its projects.
Was any other projects discussed, other than just the annex building?
No, we didn't discuss any of the other, but we do have, I know some items on the future due to, you know, just, you know, concerned about.
Drainage, it's a drainage ditch, it's on fifteen eighty-one, hasn't even started, I mean, approved at all.
They were waiting in the county to do something.
I know, but we need it to start on our side.
They were waiting in the county.
What Rick had identified was telling you to go ahead and shred everything for them to sit in there and do their survey.
So what I'd ask the council is on this end, and I'm not sure, maybe, I'm sure there's going to be more questions, but just, I know we gave you all some information, you haven't had time to digest or resolve, but. Look at it, and if people give us, give us, give me a call, I'm, I'm welcome.
The bond money that the city received in twenty sixteen, how much is still there?
I don't know.
We have approximately one point one for the two thousand.
You still have one point one available? But not all projects have been, we, we've started.
Is it one point one that's been released? Not all of it has been released.
For the certificate of, um, certificate. Objection, the two thousand sixteen, yes, we received all the plans. And so we're just doing the projects, I dealt with the drainage project.
So there's annex.
No, this is.
Bond, bond.
The two thousand sixteen.
So your drainage or street project, that's the interim, which I.
I have a question. Going, interest in sinking, going up to thirty-seven, does that require us to do any kind of rollback or?
No, no, that, would, would it require a rollback, just, I wanted to clarify, would it require a rollback, because two thousand fifteen, sixteen increase? That is back in, like I said, to you, on the general fund side, that, anything on the general fund side would probably go back, assuming you go back to the eight percent there. But the legislature tries to control it in here, and they don't, they don't appreciate that, is the general fund side. They don't want you going over certain percentages to cover your general, oh, you don't pay minimum expenses. So if you would have some sort of a rollback called, or like, to what had been two thousand fifteen, sixteen years. So, I'm basically, I'm lobbying on, on some of this stuff, making sure that you were okay. So I think the city should be fine. I don't have, I don't particularly have any concerns about, I just think, again, we're, we're putting that interest in sinking upon, which should, should have been. The two, the back four issuance, it should have both, that, that payment should have been on the INS side, and that's what should have happened. And you, that's what we told people when we were going to ask them, you should pay, we actually took it on. We told them we were going to pay the added loan taxes, and that's what should be happening. You are paying the added loan tax, but you could argue, but it does need to be on the INS side to account for every, every payment that you owe these shows. So that, that, and you will see that change, again, it's a change of thirty, twenty, twenty-three cents on your INS. I feel we can, we can manage on the general fund side of it, since that's what you seem to be, property tax.
So, so if we do that transfer, it will be in the black?
We, we will, when we do the transfer, our, our INS, that will cover all of our debt, that will cover our debt. Then we hope the issues will be treated with.
So, so how much did we end up this, this fiscal year, or are things are still coming in? Did, did we, did we stay within budget? Were we, were we in the black, were we in the red?
Just.
Year to date, for the general fund, we collected five million, five point two. Um, year to date, for the general fund, we collected five million, five point two, um, it's ended five point two. So we're, we have, we're in the red, or the green, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So we're gauging our, we're making sure we're hitting our revenue as much as we can.
So we're, we're, what, sorry?
We have a hundred and sixty-seven, we're over a hundred and sixty-seven.
In the black, or in the green?
In the green, in the green, that's good.
Black, black is good.
Black is good, yeah.
You say green is good.
Red is not.
Red is not.
That's where, that's where our, it's probably complicated.
So, uh, so we do have, again, I have our challenges, but it is something that I think is manageable. Um, but again, we are, I cannot take these property taxes, I have a decent water source, so.
It's just a consolidation of things.
Of, of, of tax revenues, tax revenues, you're paying our, INS portions paying for it. And also, it's a bit complicated, but I try to, try to explain it best.
Um, will there still be room for more modifications, uh, from here until?
Sure, one of the things that, that, again, it's not just, I, I propose this to you, but the council, so, hey, we don't wanna make some changes, or at least something we don't wanna do. Uh, we, we have to be receptive to that, um, as a staff, and so I'm, I'm all ears, so. But again, based on the discussions I've had with staff and the council, again, it follows to pass some streets, uh, and, and make no mistake, it's not a cure. We're gonna, we're gonna try to improve, what we're doing in the streets, and we're gonna try to improve, uh, what we're doing with wash program, and, 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 and get healthy employees, and, and, uh, try to give them the non-salary pay, as in what I said before. Try to give them a little incentive, maybe a couple of months, hopefully, find a way to improve healthcare, this, this, so. I think every city I've been to, I haven't seen anything this drastic, this is really big, as far as inside the city, and, and increases, and needs, and there's.
Sarah, when you say non-salary, who is specifically you're talking about? Uh, not names, but like, you know, department.
Like streets.
Like streets.
Streets, I, I take these word, uh.
Is it non-salaried, not contracted, not?
Non-salaried, and I'm saying, including myself, I'm traveling, she's salaried, I can't point, I don't know if we all totally salaried.
Yeah, I would.
If you're going to the weather, you're salaried, right?
It's, it's got, the tip.
Like, how are you going to reach people that are, based on?
Are they, are they going to?
So how are you, so they do need a salary. So we're looking at, uh.
Like, talk to any fucking house, it's like, it's like cement.
We're looking for workers, which will find, uh, the goal was to try to have that. And that's, I know there's some.
Well, so, so, no, is it also gonna get?
Well, it's, it's important to acknowledge that during the, uh, the eighty, I raised the, uh, employee raise that we did, or whatever, eighty percent rule, it was the people at the lower end of salaries that did not receive as much. And so it's important to take care of everyone, because, I mean, the council, it's the same thing.
And that's, that's, again, the reason we need to, we need to, you know, three percent, of course, people have been for more, people are making more money. But if we could do a thousand dollars, anybody across the board receives the same money. So, there's a double-edged sword, we're trying to address, and we do know we wanna keep some of the, some of the staff that has, maybe the skill level, maybe higher, and, uh, at the same time, and if you're here a long time, at the same time, we need, we need to have the momentum, so.
I have, I have a question. You know, one of the things that, that we ought, we need to know, for I D, uh, maybe the department has to know as well, is there, when, when the monies are actually released to them? Because what the councilwoman, Julie was, was saying about how to feel, you know, you're getting from our workers that, that are happy, and they're buying things in some way. So, there's, there's been some, I'm, I'm not quite clear as to when the monies are available to people. Because, uh, what we were told last, uh, their last budget session, is that, okay, we can work on streets now, and this was in June. We adopted a budget in October, and then we're, and it's work on streets in June. Uh, there has to be a better plan.
So as far as your major projects, that's what we will, so your regular maintenance of, like, pothole patching and all that, that continues, because we're good. But for major projects, major expenditures, um, we try and help back on those, because they entail a larger amount. Uh, whether it's gonna be seventy-eight thousand to construct a road, or whatever the case may be, so those are helped back. However, um, departments utilize our budget for this year to go ahead and stop up for the beginning of the year. So, um, there's not that much that they can use for this budget, and we kinda keep it. But there is expenditures that can be done, it's just your major projects, like, um, whenever we did, uh, Willow Street, um, obviously, we're not gonna start the, the year off with any major construction, but we're gonna start very conservative.
Can you explain to me why, why you do that, just as far as the major projects?
The major project, just to make sure that we're gauging, making sure that our revenues, um, for instance, we have a pair of step. Step is contributing to some of our major streets, so we're not gonna get the step money until March timeframe, so, yes. Um, so we're not gonna do those major construction projects. We're gonna have people working on minimal stuff, um, but as far as major projects, we kinda hold on, make sure we, we get those happens.
Revenue, that's what she said, and that's true, revenue's in the budget, as far as receiving the revenue, it's timeframe when you receive the revenue. Same thing with property taxes, property taxes, you normally start receiving the majority of property taxes in, say, uh, December, December, January. So you're not, the city is not truly receiving a paycheck, I said, you're not receiving the revenues until, um, you know, the latter part, when you're very, very, well, in this case, she's saying she's not, you're not gonna receive the step money until March. So, you, you are, but you still need to project the revenues that you're, that you're intending to receive, so it's just a matter of, you know, you're seeing.
Most of our debt is taken out in March, so there's a lot playing in at the beginning of the year, making sure that our guys are, are good to go, but we're being conservative, so we gotta make sure that we're gonna get those revenues, and also pay our large debt in March, so everything's being shared, so we kinda gotta gauge it and make sure we have everything in line. So we don't wanna over expend so early on, and then have to cut so much back, so we're very conservative at the beginning of the year.
I have a question. Are you gonna be able to write down the budgets, like you say, like, the chief's gonna have his own budget, he's gonna have to come to, get approvals from, from anybody, depending on the amount that he's gonna be exp?
Yes, that's one of the things that, I spoke to Bobby on something, and I know the council has some questions as far as the fire fund, or whatever, Bobby spoke. Uh, I don't wanna be a tall discussion now, because I'm discussing that with you, grabbing a deck of sessions as well. But I will say that there is some of the funds for, for the chief already, and I don't know that he's made a request for his budget for those, for the, for the seizure funds. But, yeah, he should, um, speaking of having, but, um, he should have a budget, and then get it into the council.
Okay, and, and what I'm trying to say is that he's gonna have that, as long as it's not over so much, that he's gonna need an approval from, okay?
Um, what concerned me was, uh, as brilliance last week, uh, somebody told me that they had a budget freeze, and they had X amount of dollars in their budget, but they couldn't spend anything, because they were, you, you had advised them that there was a budget freeze. How, how does that?
As of right now, we have, um, departments budgeting now, if there is something in the line item, or that line item, it's always, if they have to do a budget amendment to align, to address those issues, and then.
Well, that, that person actually told me that there was plenty of money in that line item, but, but she was, that person was told, there was a budget freeze, and no spending whatsoever. I mean, so I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little complex with this.
I don't know if there's any, I don't have.
Another question. Am I able to ask?
Well, you can, not, not, not you.
Not in public?
Not.
Well, there is a situation where the budget freeze, um, what we tell our departments is, if something's going on, and they need to get it done, and have to do the budget amendment, and move it over, once that's done, it allows that funds, because we don't want them to overspend, and then put that later, and we're not able to cover down on that. Um, so those expenditures are addressed up, lined up, and then they're able to extend. But I don't recall the situation.
On the, on the, one that you have here, the one that you said, the seventeen thousand and stuff, the breakdown was not a breakdown, and you indicated that that doesn't have to be amended? You know, when you asked for, like, when you had to move monies around?
Um, that's for the interdepartmental departments, so there is an overall budget, five thousand for the whole department. Um, and it's broken down, a thousand for meetings and travel, a thousand for whatever the case may be. They're able to expand within their department, if they go, uh, fifteen hundred and meetings and travel, they can do an interdepartmental, uh, transfer with the supporting documents, so we can address that line. And that just keeps us in line, so that way they don't go over all the overall budget. Um, that just keeps everything clean up within that department.
Um, the question, I think, who I was asking is, um, when, and it's not with the, about, um, with the taxes or anything, is when each department head, is it each department, when, when they have maintenance budgeted for a meter, do they get it at the beginning of the month, or the end of the month? I think that was a question, it wasn't when it's dispersed, because we have a budget every month for the departments, to stay within the budget for the fiscal year. The other thing that, that was just brought up was the, the budget freeze. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the only one that can freeze the budget is the council. Anybody can bring up to y'all, if they're needing something in any department head, and say they need twenty meters, when there's only budget at nine. Um, there's no budget freeze that the council has issued right now, so what they would do in that case, correct me if I'm wrong, is just put it in for amendment, to be placed on the agenda with why. But I don't think we can be telling the department heads, or the people that are working in that department, that there's a freeze, because the only ones that put the freeze on, to place is the council, because a freeze is a very, very strong word, meaning you can't find that thing.
And I'm thinking about that, because we, we look at everything, the revenues and expenditures, and especially because we're at the end of the budgets, we're like, okay, everybody, we say freeze, it's more, be conservative, um, only on what you need, because we need to make sure that our revenues and our expenditures hit.
And even if, or I think, really, but, yeah, even if, even if the budget, city business still goes, and we still gotta buy and spend.
Yeah, absolutely.
If it's really needed.
I'll have Josie on, you can go ahead, this is, I'm gonna try to, yeah. Uh, what most cities do, and every city I've been to, is, you have, gives the departments a certain amount of time, and I know what you're saying as far as, which you close, you're not closing the budget year, Josie's preparing, make town closing, so we, the other cities, we, we start, I said, preparing stuff at the end of July. So you, so what'll happen is, you won't see anything come to the city council for approval, I won't say anything, but you'll have limited amount of things coming to the council for approval. Simply because she's trying to close out the fiscal year, and so, so purchase orders, all the stuff that she's known, you just see it. You, because by statute, she's also required to close out the year, and, and provide that information at a certain time, so it gives her just a little bit of time to close out the year prior to. Because I think everybody thinks, well, we have until September third to spend all this money, and that's when, that's when the budget year's over, but she needs to have time to close the year out.
I have a comment, I don't know if you all noticed in the previous budget, but seems to me like, um, they're spending right before the, they're, 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 they're spending a, a lot of office supplies right around this time now. That, the school district is called stockpody, and they would not allow us to do that, period.
Do that, my work.
And that's why I was asking, when are the monies released, I hope not that late, so to get your supplies, office supplies at the end of the year. So, uh, those are kinds of things that I, I think we need to be careful with, and, and as we, as we distribute the monies and so forth, make sure that we, our departments are getting what they need to work with, and not to stockpile materials. On another note, I think it's very important that we all keep inventory, uh, department, uh, materials, equipment, et cetera, et cetera, because, uh, we don't know if things are being bought, and we bought, um, we don't know. Ladies, you try to control the school district with all that.
And I know we went into this problem with the office supply years back, um, and, um, what we could possibly do is, the fancy pens that are purchased, the fancy notepads, you know, we cut that, when we were on the council the last time, we saved ourselves over twenty thousand dollars. We, the manager approved only these pens, which are the ninety, yeah, those, those are the ones that I'm allowed to order. But if you see these fancy pens, and these fancy highlighters, we can't do that. You know, because if you look at all that, no offense, office people, it's just, that costs too much money. And, uh, we, we had that issue years back, and we gave, um, city manager gave them a list from Office Depot, and then we were just going to gym night, that, these are only the items you can order, these are the ink, this is the ink, this is the paper, this is the pen, this is the lamination, the laminate, probably project folders. And that helps us keep that budget low, because yet, we all like those nice pens, but you're talking four pens for twenty dollars. And somebody's gonna walk out of the city hall with it, meaning a customer, you know, an employee just puts it under here, I, I have ten here, pins in my hair, but I'm telling you, oh. You know, fuck, I don't want, I mean, I don't want pretty. But if we do that, you can save a lot of money there too, as well, if you put only these items can be ordered. Office supply is nice, especially for office people, it's fancy, you know, but we gotta be, you can't.
You, you have a question, Sarah, or?
I have something else. Speaking of cutting my, um, can you explain to me why it's important for our city workers to take city vehicles home?
It, it, there's, there's not, I have, I want to make sure it's, um, with some, those cities I've been with, it is, you give me the minutes, simply because they, they got, get called out to the call, making a response call. Now, again, to my knowledge, I know there's policy limits to, to people taking vehicles home, um, in other cities I've had, even the sign, or just premium, most of the times, the body, the vehicle, so, uh, same time they require, keep up with any, any, but as far as other cities, I, I, I don't know the policy, I have to say, it's some, if they're not on call, this is mine, but I'm here, and they're not responders. They probably, I, I, again, I don't know the stats, and who's taking what home, so, so it's kind of, I know it's a question, but I'm having that.
Even on call, you couldn't pick up the vehicle here, leave theirs here, pick up the other vehicle?
You, you could, you could do that, I mean, I, I don't know that the, I mean, I think, if that's something the council wants to, you know, I don't know how, how rigid we wanna be with that, but, uh, but it is something that we're, if somebody gets called out, one or two in the morning, to go check on a water tower, they're gonna come out here, but, it's coming, maybe it's not really a convenience, when you're trying to put a truck, when you go out there, I don't know. I'll have to understand the obligations, is, you know, to, to understand why it's making.
Are, are, is the city responsible if, if a city employee has a accident during, and, and, and it's not on call out, it's basically a personal business?
Yeah, well, we did, again, and I have some policies I can, I can provide, um, again, I'm assuming you don't have any policy that relates to, to house, or other sticks to that, I don't know for sure, but I can provide some policies, and what is, for, another policy that represents. City business, um, that's pretty much the potential, you're not, you're not, I think our policy in the city like that, which you lose, and you're controlled, and wouldn't allow it to, if they need to stop, it's a convenience store, to get something to drink, because they're, it's a head out to the job, could you, could you allow for that? Yeah, for them to, to drop their kids off, and, and I'm saying this because I've seen it happen, drop kids off at school, uh, that's not city business.
Well, not only that, boom, like, well, I didn't think that any more staff would do that, but, uh, you'd be surprised.
Yeah, I have a comment with that, we went into years ago, too, with, we pulled the vehicles, except from the cops, we were allowed the cops to take their vehicles home, just in case there was a call that a detective, an investigator, or an on-call officer needed to go and respond right away, the car's there, they just get dressed and go. Um, I know we pulled from the. I know we pulled from the department heads that were taking their vehicles home, because we had concerns about picking up grandkids, kids from school, going to mass in their vehicle, or, you know, little things like that. What we did put into place at that time was, the person on call was allowed to take the vehicle home, because if we had a water leak or a gas leak, they didn't have to go unlock the gate, take the truck out, because you're supposed to check out the vehicle. I don't know if they do that, you know, get a clipboard, check out miles you took it out of, when you put the truck back in, you put the miles you put back in. But we allowed only the on-call person to take the vehicle home, and it, and it came down to the question asking, if they're in an accident and they're not on the clock, anytime they have the vehicle, the, the city is responsible. So that's why you tell them straight home, then if you need to go to Walmart, pick up your car, go to Walmart. That vehicle's only for, if you get caught at two in the morning, and you have to act quick, you just take off.
There's my, I'm sure some things that I'm not thinking about, exactly through operation, you know? I don't, I don't, maybe they're working their shoes, but I assume that they're taking these vehicles home to respond to things like this, you know? Whether it makes sense in the district, you know, I, I, no, you. We're good? Hopefully, I have, which means, you know, you have a lot of information to digest, and so, again, the, the intent was not to, to, I'm just not getting the feel of what some of the things are happening, so the budget was prepared as best I could, as best we could, I think. Josie, I think we've got this, and some of this, as far as having prepared for it, just really meant to address some of the marketing, some, some of the concerns, council had some things that you, I will see as far as, as far as chairman and committee.
Who wants to see this for the insurance committee?
To, to, yes, to, to.
I guess what I'd do is try to establish a committee, get people involved, and, and, and insurance, and have some...
That's what I just told them, the expertise. Because I know, I know I did with the top.
More happening for more, I'm starting to think, homework. On the agenda, on the agenda, we will have, I will try to get the agenda out as quickly as I can, it's coming, you know, thirteen. I was quite frank, I, I'm not used to, no blame to anybody, but I'm not used to preparing agendas this late, whether it's, you know, for revenues, but I'm gonna try to teach other information, at the very least.
And all the backup, the boss, or anything?
Three quarters and a half, and I know, I know that's been, that's been a concern, so, so again, I apologize for not getting those.
All right.